Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock. Let's get this show on the road. First of all, if you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, can we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Alaba.
Yes, here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ingalls. French. Yes, here. Mayor Shippers. Here, thank you. And now I will not skip approval of agenda again.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended to add a FOIA appeal from Ms. Brianna Hall after the consent agenda.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls. French. Yes. Alaba.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers. Yes, motion carries. Okay, next we have public comments. And I want to reiterate that this is a time for the public to have a chance to make a statement regarding any subject matter. Public comment is not an opportunity to ask questions or converse with city staff, council members, or other meeting attendees. Contact information for council and staff is available on our website or can be obtained by calling the city number. Comment time is three minutes. An unused time may not be yielded back or given to someone else. And also, please remember that we need to treat each other with decorum as neighbors and let's just listen to what folks have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. How is everybody? Bill Barnett, I'm here to talk about Platt Road and 13th Street. The results came in from Eagle last week, I believe, and there are significant numbers above EPA criteria. PFAS has impacted drinking water wells, and now it's documented by these Eagle tests. My count is eighteen wells were tested in that vicinity of 13th Street and Platt Road, homes, and I assume the soccer field and baseball field. But out of those eighteen, seven results were above EPA criteria and an additional four results right at that criteria. So basically, eleven out of eighteen, sixty percent are above criteria. All eighteen, I believe, were detected. This is right along the Clam River, which I've been talking about since 2018 and asking for an investigation. It now is very clear what's going on. It's immediately downstream of the City of Cadillac's wastewater treatment plant, in my opinion has been for seven years, that it's being contaminated by not only the LDFA pipe and has been for twenty-five, thirty years of an entire plating company coming through unfiltered, but now as well, the Leachate that also went at least three decades and was contracted by the city sadly because it wasn't known PFAS was in the Leachate, especially not at five or six hundred parts per trillion for possibly just one chemical. So with that, there's a lot of drinking wells that are very hot next to the wastewater treatment plant. I would ask what steps is the city taking, what investigation is being done by the city to address these concerns? And if you're doing nothing about what's happened to the area in which you've obviously polluted, in my opinion, ask the state to open an investigation so people could have free filters in that area. Ask the Health Department to conduct a community health study, not only in that area, but in the areas that are affected by PFAS that we have known about. I've been coming here for a year, and I appreciate the things that have been going on and the attempts made, but we now have solid evidence. It makes sense to filter what's coming out of the LDFA, filter what's coming out of your sewer, have Haring do the same thing, and we take a break finally on the Clam River. And maybe even have the LDFA pump that stuff up and send it right back down and stop polluting this river. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Lagerway. I just wanted to say that I think in your agenda today, there's a little packet concerning dedicating the Trail Around Lake Cadillac Circle Tour, naming it as such, and part of the Walkability Committee, which I really think is a great idea, to really celebrate this trail around the city and to, for a couple of good reasons. One, signage and marketing. We have a treasure here with a lake that you can ride your bike or walk or skateboard or whatever around within the city limits. I don't know where else, maybe Reed City, or I mean Reed's Lake in Grand Rapids. I don't know if there are other places, but it's a treasure. And so I just wanted to endorse the concept of dedicating this trail as the Lake Cadillac Circle Tour. And I also wanted to just mention to you that as part of the Rotary Club, we are also working on integrating the White Pine Trail with that Circle Tour. And also, so we are raising funds right now to have an arch set up over by Harborview that will be done, designed, and built by Ivan Eiler. He's a Michigan sculptor. If you've been to Baldwin, you've perhaps seen the big fish there. He did that. He has works all over the country. And I'll have a couple of images I'll share with you, what that looks like. And we are raising funds to pay for that. We're at forty-eight thousand. We need to get to sixty thousand through the Rotary Club. So we're pretty confident we're going to get there, and we're going to get that installed over there. And that will provide an entry point. Right now, when you come up the White Pine Trail and you get to Harborview, you don't really know where to go, actually. And so we're going to have signage that leads, come through an arch that says, "Welcome to Cadillac," and then signage that takes people down to the trailhead. And then they can go all the way around the lake, too. So it's really a treasure that we have here, and if we can keep developing it, I really encourage you to do that. I think from a safety standpoint, it's really important, and also from a marketing Cadillac, too. We're at the terminus from this incredible trail. So I'll give you a couple of pictures here. You can show what the arch looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
My name is Daniel Carlson. Formerly, back in the nineties, I was D. Carlson and Sons Concrete and Block, and I built the groundwater remediation plant on the north side over in the industrial part. And I just want you to know, I'm the guy who built that. And I was around when that all happened, and I know a little bit about what happened at that time. The other thing I want to talk about is that I understand you want to take away docks at the ends of rightaways going to the lake. And on Forest Lane, there's three houses there that are bought up against some city property that have always had access to having a dock there. They've paid taxes all these years. I grew up in the house furthest to the west. My dad was Jim Carlson. He was a fire chief here. Then there was Coach Johnson in the middle house, and Dick Marine, Brad's dad, in the house closest to town. And we always had docks there. And I understand that you can't have everybody having a dock at the end of rightaways. But that piece of property isn't a normal rightaway piece of property. So I would just like to say that because of all the taxes that I know my dad paid through the years of living there, he didn't pay all them taxes, just not to have that rightaway to the lake to have a dock. We had a dock, Johnson's had a dock, Marine's had a dock occasionally. And that's one spot there that's not like the rest of the access that I would hope that you would consider realizing that, you know, people have paid a lot of taxes through the years to have access to that. And I'm not even sure, but I didn't check, but I could check with my sister-in-law to the courthouse, but they might have, they might have a rightaway there. I'm not sure about that. But I hope you'll just consider that. And I know there's a lot of reasons you can't have everybody having a dock down at the end of the rightaways and stuff like that. But them three houses, that's different, and I hope you'll consider that. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm Pam Marine, and I came to talk about good news and was so excited about the dock that we had put in down there on Forest Lane, the non-exclusive dock that everybody was enjoying so well. And I understand now that you're considering amending that ordinance. I'll certainly be at the public hearing, but I wanted to just tell you that I watched you consider spending a half a million dollars to build a fishing pier on the west end to help people have access to that lake. And now you're going to consider taking away these little opportunities that we have. You know, we acquired the dock. You don't pay for it. We put it on our insurance. We put it in the lake. We're going to take it out of the lake by the right time, and we're going to store it all winter and bring it back. The gentleman to the left has a nice little fence that shows the edge of his property, and to the right is that little city park. We're on a curve. We're where there's seldom any traffic unless you live there, and the neighborhood is loving that dock. Kids are fishing off of it. It's only this deep. If you tumble off the dock, all you have to do is stand up, you know? But they can fish out to where the seaweed is, and there's little fish coming under the dock. People are carrying a kayak, a couple carried a kayak in their hands, two blocks, to get to the lake so that they could launch off of that dock. This is one of those times where doing the right thing, it might, you know, we might be the only city that allows this, but really look at this because if two percent of your residents live on the lake, everybody else doesn't have this kind of access. If we're willing to do all the work and effort, the money, and put it on our insurance in case somebody bumps their head falling off the dock, man, do the right thing and let us keep having this for the city, for the kids.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Mayor, at the last meeting, you asked Mr. Pesha about agendas, and I think his end quote is, "If we would have them unless we deleted them," was what he said, as if the answer deleted was a normal answer. Now, these are public records required by law to be retained, not to be deleted just because you arbitrarily choose to delete them. So it's not a minor issue. Agendas and notices are legally required records. Michigan law demands are posted, maintained, and accessible. If they are deleted or corrupted, as these computer files are, then there needs to be a record of that. And I'm sure the city has got a protocol for the deletion of public records. But here's what concerned me the most is, now, one of you said, "Wait a minute. Did we just admit to deleting public records on the record?" Nobody questioned that. It was as if that was normal business. That is not normal business. You have, the law says there's a certain time period to retain. If you choose to delete a record, there is a process to delete that and to document that. So I would say if they have deleted, mayor, then I would ask them to produce that document. I FOIA'd it. I have yet to hear anything from the city regarding those deleted documents or those corrupted files. So you're responsible for the oversight. You're responsible for Mr. Pesha. If Mr. Pesha is not following the rules, then this body right here is the body that needs to say, "Hey, stop, timeout, let's get back on track." So I would ask that the council, at some point, ask Mr. Pesha to dig into those retention records and show where those files were deleted. I'd also ask you to follow up. Mr. Ingalls, who's not here, but he had a great idea, these packets for new board members. Have you seen a packet? Haven't produced a packet. I know he talks about it, but has it been produced? Is there any follow-up? And then when Mr. Dietland talks about water, it would be nice, and I know I've mentioned this multiple times, but give us some numbers. Don't just say it's good, it's fine, we got a few. What's a few? Be specific. How many were tested? How many are hot? At what level are they above? What level are they below? Otherwise, you're just going to leave it up to us to kind of interpret the data ourselves. So I hope you're paying attention. I know some of you are going to be running this November, and I think some of these issues, the dock issue, the issue of accountability and transparency.
That's your time.
Is important. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Art Stevens, and I'm just following up. This past fall, we had the same thing that's on the agenda tonight, and that's the appointment to the local development finance authority, the LDFA. And in the fall, I know there's two new members on this board since, but one of the things I addressed at that time was the process that was being used for that appointment. And in the process, we found out there was a definition that seemed to be confusing. And just to let you know, from the Public Act, this is the Public Act fifty-seven of two thousand and eighteen that the LDFA must follow. It says, "The authority shall be under the supervision and control of a board of seven members appointed by the chief executive officer of the city," and it does then have approval by the governing body. I had questioned that process because that time you had the two candidates here, and the committee was going to discuss the two and pick which one. And I was under the impression at the time that it was the city manager that was the chief executive officer. I know there had been some debate done that had determined that it was the mayor. So I'm just asking the council tonight, as you do this, I'm asking that you check on a couple of things about this. I don't know where the final answer came, if it was an appointment by the chief executive officer being the mayor or the city manager, but one of the most easiest things you can do is just be transparent. The packet says that upon review of the two applications, it doesn't state who did that review. And then consulting with the mayor. As we know, part of that conversation came up at that time is one member of the council can't have special, if it's not the mayor doing the appointment, you can't just consult with one member. It needs to be the full council. If the mayor is the one doing the appointment, that is absolutely her prerogative, but it should be very disclosed who is the person that made that recommendation. It doesn't say who did the review. The reason I bring this up is, as you know, that committee authority had, they had years where sometimes they didn't have quorums, they didn't meet them, they had these vacancies forever. The local development finance authority, some of their members today verified, they didn't even know there was a vacancy. It happened, it must have happened really fast, and somehow now, all of a sudden, it seems like it's being rushed. It has that appearance. It probably doesn't mean to, but it looks like it's kind of that shady Chicago-style politics process where there is a member that conveniently, and maybe they just genuinely put their.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. That's your time.
It's past three minutes.
I know. It goes by really, unless you're in junior high, and then three minutes is way too long to be spent. I see someone else.
My name's John Sarafano. Thanks for letting me speak before everybody today. And I know that by coming here tonight, I'm probably getting up on one of Jerika's TikToks, but that's just the price I'm going to have to be willing to pay. I don't get out a whole lot. I work from home six to seven days a week. I'm not what you would call active in the community, not really all that social. I didn't want to make the trek from my fortress of solitude to be here tonight, but I felt like I had to. For those that do know me well, they might even faint knowing that I came out into the daylight to get involved with something like this. But I've been accused of aiding Marcus and being on the city's side or whatever. And again, this is from people that don't know me all that well. For those that may not know, I want to put that all to bed right here. I don't have a horse in this race. I don't live in the city limits. I can't run for office. If I wanted to get political favors, I couldn't because I don't live in the city. I run an online business, not a local business, so occurring favor of this faction or that faction really serves no purpose. I've not been on the news multiple times. I don't have news articles written about me, and I don't have any angry people circling me in the streets telling me that I'm some kind of hero for bringing down the man that's poisoning the city to feed my ego. I say all of that in hopes that the rational citizens in the community can hopefully hear what I have to say and know that it's coming from a place of wanting the truth and what's best for the community, as I have lived here for most of my life. Why did I get involved in all this? It started with casually following the upper of the PFAS debate a number of months back, as I'm sure a lot of people in the city have. And while I did not like what appeared to be a complete lack of civility by a number of the anti-city activists, not water advocates, calm down, I didn't pay much mind to it until I saw some posts about death threats being directed at two lightning rods in city leadership at that time, which was Carlin Marcus. This thread was particularly appalling, and I have a pretty high threshold for online banter. I read in disbelief as many of the anti-city leaders minimized, justified, rationalized, and condoned what, to me, was dangerously hostile rhetoric. When you're able to get people into the height of fear and get them irrationally angry about their perceived safety, you would be surprised what one lone martyr is willing to do with nothing to lose. In one comment, a local gentleman made the suggestion that the community take their guns and storm City Hall. This thread was a powder keg ready to ignite. It was at this point that I made the decision to oppose those few individuals as much as I could on their digital forums, which is their seat of power. I am not anti-clean water. I am anti-toxic leaders that do more harm than good in their crusade to bring it all down. Winning at all costs has a heavy cost, and when self-appointed leaders are willing to go to any lengths to win the day, we should all take pause and look at them with the same scrutiny that they're demanding us to look at their opponents with. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarafano. Seeing no one else, I will close public comments and move to our PFAS update.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. Jeff Dealing?
Yes. How you doing? Hi, mayor.
Oh, wait, no, the PFAS update's in the consent agenda. Yeah.
I'm mayor and city council. I have a short update, I do believe. As you know, as of last council meeting, we had forty-eight completed tests inside the city, the Cyclopeure test. We have, since then, went and hung door hangers on people's house. We did last week a test in another seven houses, which two of those were repeat tests from when Cyclopeure had their problem in their lab. So all the ones that may have been contaminated in the lab, all those tests have been redone. And we do have another thirteen tests scheduled in the next two collections that we have, next two days. We do Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then we do have, we had one gentleman come in today and just told us he does not want to have a PFAS test done at his house. So we'll report that done, too, because he just did not want to. At good news, at 5:28 today, I went and checked my email. I got the UCMR back. As you guys know, UCMR is Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. We had just put in, in, let's see, May nineteenth, we took samples of both of our water plants, sent it in. There was twenty-nine PFAS chemicals they tested for and one other one, which was lithium. We were below detect on lithium, which is nine parts per billion. On the PFAS chemicals, again, there's twenty-nine of them, everything they tested was below their detection limits. But their detection limits, since people want to know the numbers, are between two parts per trillion and eight parts per trillion, depending on which contaminant it is, because all contaminants may have different detection levels. But everything we had at both water plants was below detections for the twenty-nine PFAS chemicals change they were looking for. So I think that's really great news. The thirteenth implant that the former mayor brought up, we have no knowledge of those tests, where the state has not contacted us about those tests. If the state did those tests, they're outside of the city. I do know since 2018, when we were testing water and we've tested the wastewater plant, we have never been above any monitoring level that the state would consider harmful. We've always been well below whatever the established limits were. And in 2019, I think, when Leachate stopped, we actually dropped a lot lower. So I cannot say what the LDFA did before 2018. I cannot say what the wastewater plant did. I only have the data I have, which shows well below the levels that they're probably getting in their wells on 13th Street and beyond 13th Street and Platt.
That was even with Leachate being accepted at the plant?
Probably even with, well, yeah, probably with Leachate being accepted. I'd have to look at their numbers. I don't know their numbers. But if they have ones that are at the federal limits, as Mr. Barnett said, there was four or five that was at, and then some above, those ones at them would be pretty close to what the plan is right now. So, you know, again, I don't know what in the past was, I don't have records of that. I don't know how you get records of that. I don't know how you infer that it was higher back in the day. I know we have two records of when we were accepting Leachate, and I know what the numbers were at those two records leaving the plant in eighteen and nineteen. But I don't know, you know, in 1950, if it was a hundred times higher. I don't know how anybody would figure that out either. So that's just the numbers I have. And the city's going to go to the PFAS resource fair they're having. We're going to set up a booth, tell people, you know, show people where the wells are in the city, the private wells, tell them how they can get a Cyclopeure test if they want through the city. Tell them, you know, tell them about our water, wastewater, tell them, you know, everything. We're going to have a bunch of flyers and that, and that just will tell them what the city has done about this, so.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that. Next, we have consent agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll support it.
Councilmember Ingalls. French? Yes. Alaba?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers? Yes, motion carries. All right, next, let's see. Turn the page. Next is the FOIA appeal from Ms. Brianna Hall. Is she here? Okay, so.
So, Mike, if you want to do the same that you did the last time?
Sure.
Introduce it, let council discuss, and then we can go from there.
So Ms. Hall had submitted a FOIA appeal and asked for documents related to public street trees in front of 512 and 516 North Simmons Street. The city responded to those denying the appeal mostly because, within the context of the request, we had no public records other than, and we noted this in the response, other than the complaints that Ms. Hall had submitted herself. And so we excluded those, thinking she probably doesn't want to pay fees on. And so we excluded those, thinking she probably doesn't want to pay fees on FOIA documents for her own filings and complaints. So she has appealed that. There are still no such records other than her, the complaints that she herself filed. And so to the extent that she has appealed that portion of the denial, then we've recommended and drafted a response saying that you can have your own complaints if that's what you want, but there are no other records responsive to the request that she had submitted.
So the motion would be to, it would be to approve in part and, or deny the appeal or approve the appeal in part and deny the appeal in part?
Yeah, it would be to grant in part and deny in part.
Okay. Anybody want to do that?
Granted with respect to the, her own complaint.
As what was, as what's in the document?
Correct. I'll make a motion that we grant in part and deny in part.
Second. Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles? Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, communications, this looks like fun.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Seneca Place from North Boulevard to Mohawk Drive from three PM to ten PM on July twelfth, twenty, twenty-five for a block party.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Seneca Place from North Boulevard to Mohawk Drive from three PM to ten PM on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five for a block party.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the request from the Cadillac area Visitors Bureau to allow Kiss-themed banners to be displayed on the existing poles downtown from June seventeenth through October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I would be happy to make a motion to approve the request from the Cadillac area Visitors Bureau to allow Kiss-themed banners to be displayed on the existing poles downtown from June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five through October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, appointments.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Dan Alto to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a five-year term to expire on June sixteenth, two thousand and thirty.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Dan Alto to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a five-year term to expire on June sixteenth, twenty thirty.
Second.
Councilmember Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Jennifer Schmelzer to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Jennifer Schmelzer to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Support.
Touche.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles? Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Before we do the next one, can I ask for some clarification?
I'd be happy to start.
Thank you.
Mike can jump in if necessary.
Yes, thanks.
We did go through this conversation this past fall. The city charter is very clear. The city manager position serves as the chief administrative officer for the city of Cadillac. The mayor, for all things statutorily and ceremonially, serves as the chief executive officer. The statute regarding the appointment does reference chief executive officer, which is why the communication that's drafted in tonight's packet is identical to the one that was drafted this past fall, referencing the consultation between the city manager and the mayor, with then the recommendation moving forward having to be made by the mayor accordingly. And Mike, do you want to clarify any of that?
No, other than to say it's the mayor's appointment to make, and the city council, their function is to either confirm or not that appointment made. But the mayor is free to consult with whomever she wants on the appointment.
Yes, and we all saw the applications and...
It's all in the packet.
We all got that, all that information in the packet. Okay, we're good? All right, then I would like to approve the appointment. I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of David Johnson to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term to expire on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. This first item is something that came from essentially our walkability group. Councilmember Alabas volunteered to be a part of that group, which was fantastic. We do have our city engineer here. We have Mark Lagerway, if he is still here as well. Dr. Smith and others have been a part of this, this, this group to talk about how to improve walkability in our area. They attended essentially a professional development type series as well. And one of the, one of the recommendations that really just got flushed out last week was to look at branding and developing a circle tour around Lake Cadillac. Lake Cadillac all around is approximately seven miles. The city was successful in getting a decent-sized grant that can actually help offset some of the signage costs. But before, you know, we get too far down, down that road and actually starting to look at pulling some of those funds and developing the signage, we wanted to make sure, of course, that city council was okay or is okay with, with the, the name of branding at, you know, Lake Cadillac Circle Tour. And, you know, Brian or Mark, if there's anything more you'd like to add to it, certainly feel free. I know we're also talking about, you know, improving the lines and different bike lines to help with, you know, that type of essentially notification for whether you're pedestrians, motorists, bicyclists, doing whatever we can to also improve safety around that. That trail will also be something that we'll focus on too, so. Did we decide if that was gonna be one way or both ways?
I think we...
If, Mark, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone?
We had some conversation about whether it could be a one-way, and some of the rationale for that is that it's safer going around clockwise, because you don't have to make left turns, right? So you don't have to cross Sunnyside when you're coming back, for example. But there are many people that use the pathway around the lake, going different directions, maybe short distances, maybe from school downtown, whatever. We can't, we can't designate it, in my mind, as a single direction. So we could, one of the, talking about the signage, we talked about, you know, having a sign at each mile, and it could be one mile and maybe on the other side coming back it says five miles or six, whatever, you know. So you could, you could still have mileage signs, but, but we, it does need to be looked at from a safety standpoint. That's really, and Brian can attest to that, right? We need to get that railroad track fixed. But other things also that really are Cadillac West, there's a lot of areas going around that lake where there's dangers, and I can testify to that all day. But whatever we can do with signage and with painting, regular painting, because the paint doesn't last, it just doesn't last for more than a year, two at the most. So, and that sends a message to the people coming to Cadillac. When you have good lines painted for walking, biking, and everything else, that sends a message that you care and that you welcome them to use that trail, so. Some thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so...
I'd make a motion to dedicate the seven-mile pathway around Lake Cadillac as the Lake Cadillac Circle Tour.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, next item, little bit odd, because we don't have an exact date, but commercial property located at three-three-three Haynes Street is currently scheduled to be demolished in July. And, you know, rather just closing everything down on, technically on an emergency basis because we are aware it's coming, the proper thing is to come to city council and request the necessary approval. The demolition of this building, which by the way is somewhat close to the new micropark off of Haynes Street, adjacent to the Clam River, just to help kind of orient you into location, is gonna also require not just a lane shift, but also sidewalk closure and possibly a street closure. And so we are gonna get notified at least a day ahead, once the contractor notifies the property owner when all of this is gonna happen. They think it's gonna happen sometime within the first, you know, couple of full weeks of July. They're looking at the seventh between the eighteenth. And again, the request here is to, to just authorize us to, to move forward and make that closure, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the lane shift, sidewalk closure, and potential street closure for the demolition of three-thirty-three Haynes Street building.
Second.
Councilmember Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
Next item is regarding an emergency repair over at our wastewater treatment plant. Because of timing, we are able to actually bring it to city council first versus just simply reporting out as a, as an emergency repair. We have a leak with our tertiary filter systems. I think, Jeff, are there three or four of them that are...
There's three of them.
Three of them, okay. So there's three of them that are, that are in need of replacement. It's essentially a single-source company that's qualified to do this. The company's name is Monarch Welding and Engineering. The amount is eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and their repair will essentially fix where the leak is where the Aqua Disc filters connect into the system. Do you want to give a little more detail to that?
Yeah, and these are standalone tanks inside of our tertiary part of our building, standalone steel tanks, and they have penetrations where pipes go actually through the tank, and it's actually rusting at the connection of the, where the pipe penetrates through the tank. So the solution is drain the tank, get it dry, cut out that pipe, get another pipe with a square plate on it that you weld on on the inside, outside, make sure it's all waterproof, and then you put it back on. The one's actively leaking, the other two has rusted away at that point, but they're not actively leaking. So Aqua Disc, the manufacturer, had recommended that all three of them be replaced right now, because you're doing one, do the other ones. And it is a weakness in their tank, that they've, you know, they said this is a weak point, and this is what happened. So those tanks were installed in two thousand and three, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thanks.
I'd make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding filter pipe replacement.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles? Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Mark, if I may, I said two thousand and three, it was two thousand and eight. Just want the record straight. That was, those were installed in two thousand and eight, not two thousand and three.
Thank you.
So sorry about that.
And I'd make a motion to award Monarch Welding and Engineering, Inc., the sum of eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars to repair the pipe in three Aqua Disc tertiary filters.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The next item this evening is consideration of the replacement of the pickup truck for the fire marshal. As you'll see in the communication in your packet, we were in communication with two, or excuse me, with four MyDeal vendors. MyDeal, again, just for public reference, is the organization that, that essentially operates the state, the state bidding. We also were in communication with a local vendor. If we are able to go local, we always try to do that as well. Unfortunately, as you can see, we are unable to go local. The vehicle that, that is available is not, it doesn't, it's not the right color. I think it's, it's black, is that right, Adam? And we do need red. This is for the fire department. And so the recommendation this evening, therefore, is to award the purchase of twenty-twenty-four GMC in accordance with the MyDeal bid to Todd Wenzel Buick GMC of Westland in the amount of forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. We do have funds available in our fire department budget. The other thing I want to mention is that this is for fiscal year twenty-six and that the acquisition of the vehicle won't happen until after that fiscal year commences, which is July one of twenty twenty-five. What's wrong with this old pickup truck? Would you like to...
A lot of things. It's a two thousand and seven.
Oh, you, no more. That's all right.
So we've got a lot of life...
I still had to ask, you know that. It's rusted out. Okay, I'll take your word for it.
Can't be fixed without major, major overhaul.
Motion to award the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four GMC truck in accordance with the MyDeal bid to Todd Wenzel Buick GMC of Westland in the amount of forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. One last item under the city managers' report this evening. It's an out-of-state travel request for our director of public safety. Again, just for public interest, the director of public safety oversees both police and fire operations. Under the, under this request, he's looking at attending a convention very similar to what city manager types attend. It's an international association where he'll have the opportunity to meet and network with people in his position from all over the world. This convention is gonna be taking place in October in Colorado. It's estimated to cost approximately twenty-five hundred dollars. My recommendation to city council would be to positively ratify the approval, or my recommendation of sending it, rather.
Going to these, especially with the way the, you're part of the city, it changes. I mean, there's, there's so many changes and so much volatility in the world right now. I think it's really important that you keep abreast of the most pertinent and latest policies and stuff. Yeah, thank you. Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request for the director of public safety as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Ingles?
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Can't wait to hear about some of the cool things you learned.
That's for you. Mayor, under introduction of ordinances, the first one is a request to simply set a public hearing for July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. This is in regard to an ordinance that will amend section twenty-six dash one zero four and twenty-six dash one ten of our code. And I just want, before I punt this over to our community development expert that's here tonight, just want to make sure, and I know people here in the, in the audience understand, at least I believe they do, the city is not looking at restricting or removing any private docks from private party, from private property anywhere. I know that there's been some news coverage of this, and I think there's just some confusion out there, generally speaking, so hopefully that clarifies that. Mr. Adams?
Good, you took away my first comment.
Well, feel free to reiterate.
That's all right. Again, for clarification, we're talking about seasonal docks at public road ends, and the current city ordinance references eleven locations at which these road ends are actually positioned. And importantly, just in case you're not familiar with a road end dock location, they exist primarily only on paper. The road doesn't actually go to the lake, but what we have is a small segment... Uh, the road doesn't actually go to the lake, but what we have is a small segment of, uh, subdivided or platted roadway. That is, it was created during the development of, let's say, a subdivision plat. For some reason, the developer decided, well, I'm gonna have this road go all the way to the ro- or to the, uh, to Lake Cadillac. Again, they exist on paper only, they're owned by the city, obviously, that's why they're called the public, uh, road end. They tend to be small segments. I know, I live near the, uh, Alice Avenue segment, uh, on the south side of the lake, and it's about, uh, ten, fifteen feet in length. Some are, are a little, uh, a little longer. Uh, the majority of them, if, you wouldn't even know they were a road end because they are, consist of grass. I know in my area, a lot of folks have planted flowers on them and so forth, and so forth. And they don't include, uh, actual developed facilities for, uh, the parking of vehicles and trailers, so, uh, as was mentioned tonight by the, the one that's being used by kids, uh, typically you have to park, uh, some distance away. The, uh, city, as you know, historically has maintained, uh, an ordinance that did allow for the docking of boats, the seasonal docking of boats at these road ends. And in, uh, the year two thousand and twelve, the state of Michigan, and this kindly happened as a result of a lot of municipalities concerned about issues associated with road end docks, state of Michigan passed Public Act fifty-six, which effectively said, uh, docks at public road ends are illegal unless, uh, the municipality, uh, passes an ordinance that does provide for them. And so what, what's happened is we've had a couple of individuals approach the city with inquiries, questions about, well, how do what we have relate to, uh, the, uh, Act fifty-six? And so Marcus said, let's do some research and, um, decide what we need to, uh, to do here. Uh, we looked at a number of, uh, of sources, uh, for example, the Michigan Lakes and Streams Association, uh, they have a, a wealth of information on, on this matter. It turns out I just so happen to know and have known for a long time personally, the attorney that represents them, and, um, but I'm sure Mike is much more intelligent on these, uh, ma- matters than him. Uh, anyway, Cliff Bloom, by the way, uh, Mike. Um, we also looked at what other municipalities had done, as well as a, a variety of other sources. And I will tell you, uh, that, generally speaking, uh, the information we found did not, uh, plant a very positive picture towards the maintenance of, of an ordinance such as the one we have. What we found was that, uh, and again, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not giving you legal advice, but in looking at some of the decisions of the Michigan appellate courts, for example, it was implied that a dock at a public road end, even if it's installed by a private party, it's, uh, essentially becomes a public facility, and as such, it must be, uh, installed, maintained, and effectively owned by the municipality and not by private, uh, interests. And even if the dock is, is public, again, in all cases, it has to be open for general public use. So if I were to put a dock at the end of Alice Avenue, uh, I can't say, well, nobody else can use that, it is open to, uh, to anyone. Well, that automatically then creates some issues in terms of liability, of course. Another issue was just that, that we found liability concerns, uh, again, even if the person, uh, provides, or even if the, uh, the dock is owned by a private party, and even if that person provides, uh, liability, uh, insurance coverage. At these docks, uh, again, by Public Act fifty-six, you cannot, uh, dock a boat overnight. And so, um, in the evening or at night, that boat has to be removed. And so for a lot of communities, uh, that resulted in a, in an issue, uh, an enforcement issue, and likely would happen here too. Uh, we also found that, uh, the delineation of dock road ends, uh, our dock road ends are not well delineated, so that has the potential to result in issues between adjoining property owners. Seems like all I'm gonna do is talk about negatives. And, uh, also, we found possible concerns with state regulations, that is, the individual or even the city putting the dock in place, um, making sure you didn't negatively impact the shoreline, which created a whole host of, uh, of other issues. And then lastly, the, the staff time and the costs needed to, uh, uh, enforce, uh, the ordinance and the oversight of, of some. And I thought about this, what if we eliminated do- uh, the docks at public road ends? You know, what, uh, what would the result might be, or are there alternatives? And I started thinking, the city does provide two very, uh, usable, very attractive, uh, facilities for the launching, both the putting in and the taking out of boats. Uh, there's one on Chestnut, for example, near Lake Street, and then the other is at Kenwood Park. And I did a quick calculation, we provide about seventy, uh, sites, or I'm sorry, seventy spaces at those locations, uh, for the parking of vehicles and, uh, and boat trailers. And, uh, those are free of charge, not only to the residents, but also to, uh, to guests. And so, um, if the, uh, private or if the boat docks were to be eliminated at public roadways, there would still be opportunity, free of charge, to launch your boat and, of course, to take it out, uh, at the, uh, at the existing public facilities. And then I, I know there was the comment tonight raised about, uh, the, the, uh, the docks used for fishing, possibly swimming, and I thought about my grandkids, for example, and it probably is fun. Uh, again, what we found was a, a host of liability issues, but again, has the city done anything? And as you know, at Kenwood Park, for example, we provide about almost four hundred feet of shoreline, beach shoreline, along with a complement of facilities, restrooms, picnic facilities and so forth. So we do, uh, try to meet the needs of people from the standpoint of swimming. And although there is a little bit of cost involved, also Mitchell State Park, you can go, uh, on the Lake Mitchell side, and there is a large, uh, very nice beach that is also available to people for swimming. I realize neither one of those necessarily may be within a block or two of, of, uh, of certain residential areas, but I guess, uh, what I'm saying is that we do provide, uh, facilities of, uh, for boat boating as well as swimming.
Jerry, there was some comment this evening about the uniqueness of the Forest Lane location, um, that I do believe is true and accurate, that it is different than the other road ending locations that are, dare I call them just simple road ends, whereas this location also includes what folks may not realize, but a, a, a very small public park space. Is there any, anything to add on that?
I mean, there's, there's always the potential for us to look at the development of a facility at that location.
But then that would be the cities.
That would be the city to do so. Now, I'm not saying that couldn't be done in concert with, uh, the surrounding homeowners and so forth, but, yeah, there's always the possibility of, of developing other sites.
And that would be a public policy discussion, debate.
Correct, that's correct.
Right. Mike, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Nope, I think Jerry got it all.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, according to the ordinance, the person who puts the dock in, uh, the private owner, if, having the understanding that it is a public use dock, according to the ordinance, they have to come up with, um, liability insurance to cover the liability, huh, and how, but it doesn't state how much liability coverage that would require. Does, is there a number, a dollar amount that, uh, would, uh, cover the expense or the liability of the city's, um, concerns of a potential, uh, accident if, if the homeowner or the owner of the dock has, uh, insurance coverage? That's one of my questions. The other one is, uh, the fact that the city, uh, completely owns this, um, has this, that the Lake Cadillac is contained within the city limits, does that, um, make things different in terms of the, um, Inland Streams Act and the, um, coverage of any kind of state, uh, involvement in permitting? And, and then my third question is, if we get rid of dock ends, um, uh, meaning, uh, docks at road ends, I'm sorry, um, and say that they're no longer allowed, what kind of uses are allowed? Um, if I'm an adjacent or a neighborhood, uh, in that neighborhood, can I, can I go take a lawn chair over at the end of the dock and sit down and fish from shore? Can I drag my kayak over and launch it from the sand edge and, um, you know, access the lake that way as a non riparian owner? Uh, I think, I think the intention of this ordinance, uh, or can I just go there and have a picnic and swim, uh, with my family? Um, I think the, the intention of the ordinance was to allow for neighborhoods, not the public, but just neighborhoods, uh, people that live in the neighborhood adjacent to the, um, road end would have access that they wouldn't have to get in their car and drive over to one of our many public resources that we have on Lake Cadillac. We're so fortunate to have the parks and the boat launches and all of those things, but I think that the way these road end docks would be used would be less for boats, um, and more for just public access, simple public access uses. Anyway, that's my comments, thank you.
I, um, I don't wanna, Mike's taking some notes, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the city attorney.
Yeah.
But my, my thought is those are great questions.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we still set the public hearing.
Yes.
Um, and then we'll, we'll communicate at the public hearing evening. Infor- further information.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Is that okay with you, or did you wanna?
Yep.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And if anybody else has stuff before then, shoot it that way.
Okay.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section twenty-six dash one oh four and se- and section twenty-six dash one ten of the court of, code of ordinances and set a public hearing for July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls? Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Um, moving, moving along, members of council, mayor, members of council, the, uh, next item is, again, a request to set a public hearing. Uh, this is in regard to the, uh, former Cooley School, uh, building, uh, that I believe everybody on council is well aware, we're in the process of, of trying to work it, uh, in terms of getting it redeveloped. Uh, there are representatives here that are part of that development team and ownership team. Um, the, uh, uh, city, uh, as I mentioned before, uh, is being asked to consider, uh, a brownfield program, um, identical to what, uh, we were asked to consider for the North Lake Street Flats project, as well as, uh, the Cadillac Lofts Phase Two project. Uh, just because as a matter of timing and your public meeting schedule, the way that it's falling, we're asking, uh, to just basically set the date, uh, for, uh, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five now. Uh, that way we're able to get it, get it going in July versus having to wait until August or September, so.
Okay. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding former Cooley School brownfield plan and the public hearing for July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Support. Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls? French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
Um, as this is our last regularly scheduled, uh, city council meeting, um, before the start of the new fiscal year, we do have some year-end housekeeping, uh, regarding a budget amendment. Our finance director, Owen Roberts, if you would.
Yep, so I'll be very brief on this. Um, as we go through, I did provide an updated copy. Um, we received, uh, our legal bill for May, uh, just today, and was concerned that, that we need just a few extra dollars for that so that we don't violate that appropriation, so that is added to the copy that's on your desk. Page one is the general fund revenue. We did receive our second personal property tax reimbursement payment from the state of Michigan, and the good news is that's up about sixty thousand dollars over last year, so we're gonna receive about a hundred, eight hundred and one thousand, uh, compared to a budget of six seventy-five. Um, we were concerned it was gonna go down a little bit like it did the year before, but it actually went up, so that puts us in a good position by a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Uh, the city attorney line, again, uh, increasing by about ten thousand. I don't anticipate that we'll need all that, um, but wanna be, uh, safe just in case. Uh, in the fire department, some additional overtime, uh, and I will say that that's been whittled down quite significantly over the last couple of years. A lot of it was generated, uh, with the transition from MMR, or to MMR from North Flight and some, some issues that came up there that are, were continuing to whittle that number down. Uh, sidewalks and alleys, equipment rental, this is a reflection of increased, uh, sidewalk plowing, uh, with a, a heavy snowfall winter. Some additional equipment rental, again, for leaf cleanup that's paid for in the general fund. And in the code enforcement, uh, department, some additional salaries and, and wages based on, uh, some overtime hours generated in the, uh, code enforcement arena as we, uh, ramp up those activities. Overall, with the general fund, um, we're a little bit better off than we were at the la- as of the last budget amendment, so anticipating instead of using, you know, about three hundred and fifty thousand in, in reserves, uh, only about two seventy-seven. The major street fund, uh, the next two funds are major and local, and they'll be very similar. Um, forestry, uh, we didn't, we've incurred some, uh, pretty significant contractual services this year. We had the, the big storm last fall, and so, um, we use the private contractor for some significant help with that. Uh, they come in, uh, remove the tree, uh, and do the, and do the stumps. So in the right of way for both the major and local streets, uh, that budget needs to, to go up a bit. And then in the winter maintenance, uh, for supplies, which is salt and equipment rental, which is the costing out of plow trucks and, and loaders and things, uh, were higher this year than budget based on the actual winter. Same thing for the state winter maintenance, this is our contractual snow removal from state trunk lines within the city. Uh, moving on, page three, top of page three, local street fund, you'll see the same thing, some additional contractual services in forestry and some additional winter maintenance expenses. Uh, the Brownfield redevelopment authority approved some contractual services to take from the local, um, remediation fund, which are excess tax captures that we're allowed to take to use for brownfield type activities. Um, Eagle, uh, had requested some, some testing and some other things at the, the site of the market based on the, the changes there, and so the brownfield has agreed to cover those. Uh, the, the, the B R A did approve those changes. And last, uh, page, building inspection fund, um, good news, I guess, the permit fees are up and will exceed the budget this year as of the, the May and June bills. So we're, um, just budgeting for some additional permit fees and some, you know, most of those are passed on to our contractual building inspection company. And finally, the stores and garage fund, this is the D P W where we have all of our fleet of, of equipment and then charge it out via equipment rental to all of our various activities. So we're seeing some additional equipment rental, um, as you've seen in the expense budgets above. Part of that, though, we're also seeing some additional equipment maintenance and repair bills, so gonna bump both of those up. Uh, the fund overall will come out fine, just need to budget in some additional equipment maintenance. Happy to answer any questions, uh, on any of those items.
Are we good?
Good, no questions.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls? French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay. Um, last but not least, uh, uh, request for the setting of another public hearing, and I, I will just, as a quick interlude, apologize to city council because the way that these are coming up, legally, we have to meet certain publishing deadlines, and it, you know, the boards and the activity from developers are just, they are what they are, so it's syncing up to where we're, we're gonna- where we're, we're going to have a handful of public hearings at your next meeting.
You're saying bring a coffee to the next meeting.
Bring a coffee to the next meeting, yes. But again, it's a request to set a public hearing up for July twenty-first, and this is regarding to the establishment of a tax increment financing plan that the Cadillac West Improvement Authority has put together, reviewed, and, and has recommended now for city council ratification. And, and very similar to your downtown development authority, they have a tax increment financing plan that's in place that at some point, city council would have approved as well. It's the same, same process here, so.
Okay.
Asking for the public hearing setting.
Well then, I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding a development and tax increment, increment financing plan for the Cadillac West corridor improvement area and set a public hearing for July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
Yours.
House Member Ingalls?
French?
Yes.
Allen Boss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, I believe that takes us to our final public comments, same rules, three minutes. Okay.
Yeah, Brad Marine Cadillac. Thanks, Jeff, that was a good brief, actually. Appreciate that. The docks on North Boulevard, so there's a, a number of docks already on public property on North Boulevard. I'm sure there's something along there that works that we could keep that open, because I think, Ms. French, you're right, historically, it is for the neighborhood. So tonight's, also tonight's agenda indicates you're having a meeting, will be adjourned for closed session pursuant to M C L fifteen point two dash six, to consider confidential legal opinions which are exempt from discussion or disclosure by the state or federal statute. The public needs to know specifically what state or federal statute is exempting these legal opinions, which are not part of a court case, not part of any issue that should be hidden from the public. In fact, in my research, Mr. King, when he was a member of the council, stopped this type of legal opinion from going into closed sessions approximately three times. The council should be transparent and disclose what the legal opinion, what legal opinion has been requested in relation to the city manager, because this is not exempt.
I want to just thank you guys for this chance to say stuff about the docks.
Would you say your name again? We thank you.
I'm sorry, my name is Daniel Carlson.
Thank you, thanks.
You know, I'll tell you, before the, the curbs and everything were put in there down on Forest Lane, the city didn't, I mean, they're beautiful. It's really nice. It's really nice down there. It's like a little park, isn't it? But before them were there, yours truly here used to mow the grass, and if I didn't mow it, I wasn't going to go nowhere that weekend. My dad made sure. And you know, we used to pull up our boats down there. I had a little racing boat. My dad said, he was on the dive team for the fire department, and he said, Dan, that's a nice little boat you've, you've made there and built, and I put it all together with the help of Dick Marine. I used to run around with Rick Marine, Brad's older brother, he had one too, you know. But my dad said, I don't want you off of Lake Cadillac, you go on Lake Mitchell, and I'm going to help you pull the boat up, and you'll have to sell it, because I don't want to have to look in Lake Mitchell for you if you were drowned. I want to know that you're in Lake Cadillac. So he told me, that's how he rolled. And so I said, yes, sir. And, well, Brad and I were down there in the, you know, we'd go down the canal, I'd always turn around at the bridge and come back, because all the chicks from Detroit were at the, were at the park, and we always waved at them and stuff, and then I'd turn around and come back, and, but one day, Rick decided, come on, he said, let's just go around to the other beach, and we, I thought, oh. I went around there and I looked up at the bridge, and there goes the old Pontiac Catalina. And I'll tell you, I knew my goose, my goose was cooked. I got home that night, I stayed away for most of the day. I come home, my dad was sitting on the, on the bench, that was between them two trees that are, that they're still down there, Brad, and I was looking at him this morning when I had the dog down there getting a drink of water. He was sitting there and he said, you remember what I told you? I said, yes, sir. And he helped me pull up my boat and I sold it. I had to sell it. Ed Paquette bought it. And, so there's so much things going in there, there's got to be some alternatives that can happen there for them three houses, you know. I, I can see the whole rest of the city not, you know, having a, maybe a spot to go swimming, like you were talking about, but, but not to put their docks in and boats and everything else there. But there's got to be some alternatives, maybe address, addresses on the docks or for them three houses, or takeout dates, you know.
Thanks, Mr. Carlson, that's your time. Be sure to come back for the public hearing.
Okay, I will.
It's five minutes at a public hearing.
Okay, great. I'll tell you another story.
Right, another story. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Well, I was so positive, and I'm going to try to be as positive as I can, and again, thank you for letting me speak, give me an opportunity to speak on this. To speak with candor here a little bit and try to stay a little bit positive, but I had some things I want to say for quite some time. Let's speak for a lot of quiet people that have reached out to me. So I'm just going, go ahead and do that. John Serafano, once again. And not everybody in certain movements are negative. There are quite a few people in that movement that are, that are, that are genuinely concerned and I think have the right intentions, but there are a few members of that faction, and that's really who I'm speaking to today in front of the council, so just wanted to get that on record. The moral fortress of superiority is pretty tall with these self-appointed leaders, and anyone who dare question them is usually met with pretty fierce opposition, and after all, if you disagree with them, you, you clearly don't care about the water. I have been kind of ruthlessly criticized by these individuals, character attacks, called a coward, washed-up high school has-been was one of them, which is entertaining, called a liberal, which I got a good, good laugh out of, soulless, being attacked as a father, I think that was in some of the comments. So I usually pay no mind to these sorts of temper tantrums, as I expect that level of behavior from these sorts of individuals. But the overarching point I want to make here is that these people demand transparency, but seem to have zero tolerance for debate in public forums about things that don't fit nicely into the remove city leadership at all costs plan. These same individuals screech about transparency, block me on social media, which I don't care about, because they don't want to debate the issues anymore. They believe they are right, they know they are right, and that's the end of it, but I just humbly ask, is that transparency? The one thing that really put me over the edge in coming here tonight, and I, and I, I say this with a like a somber heart, because this is difficult for me, wasn't so much a double standard that they seem to operate with or the, on top of their ivory tower of water purity, it was that they are willing to go to any lengths to silence people who do not agree with them. How far, one might ask? Well, one gentleman had reached out to me and we had a discussion privately about this whole debacle, and he told me that two of the leaders in this movement reached out to his place of employment, spoke with his director, and tried to get him fired for disagreeing with them on social media, under the pretenses that he works for a nonprofit, so he can't engage on Facebook posts with political opinions. They took it one step further in threatening that they would turn the organization into the IRS over this, so. This was the domino that ultimately brought me here tonight. And so, to the business owners and citizens of the community, I just want to ask a humble question. If these sorts of people are actually get positions of power in this city, or install people sympathetic to their aims and power, how far do you think they would go to dispense with people that deem them as a threat? What if you happen to be one of these people? Me personally, I, I don't think that people who can't, people that can't demonstrate restraint and civility in the private domain have any business operating in the public domain, but that's, that's just a, an opinion. And I'd like to close on this. First of all, city council members, I'm sure that you're fatigued, you know, over all the stuff. I've had discussions with a lot of you privately, and thank you for giving me that time.
Sorry, Jeff, we're, we're out of time.
I'm out of time, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing no one else, let's close public comments and go to good of the order.
Can I start?
Sure, have at it.
I've got a couple of things. Well, first of all, thank you, Jerry Adams, Mr. Adams, for your, your reporting on the dock end issue. I meant to precede my comments with that, because I know you put a lot of energy into that, and I appreciate it, that history. Two things, let's see, oh, I want to tell Owen to thank the street cleaning crews that have come through within the last couple of weeks and cleaned up the curb sides, because I tend to walk at the curb edge a bit when I go for my walks, because it's easier to push a white cane without sidewalk cracks along the curb edge. So all that, you know, winter debris is now cleaned up and it's, it's wonderful, so thank the crew for that. And then, Sunday morning yesterday, there was an accident at the end of Marble Street by a car coming, caused by a car coming down the hill who hit a pickup truck coming out of the cemetery driveway, okay? And then she T-boned that truck and then diverted and hit the electrical pole and took the electrical pole out. So the good news was neither of the drivers were hurt badly, I think their cars were totaled. There, it took, it took the power, it took the power pole right down, so what I'd like to say is thanks to the first responders who showed up like on the spot very quickly to, the good news was there was nobody else on the highway at the time, so they had, you know, as the accident was occurring, it didn't cause any other accidents. The reason I'm bringing it up is, again, to thank the first responders who showed up on Sunday morning, Father's Day, at ten a.m., or whatever time that was, to take care of business and take care of it safely, and consumers' power who had to set a new pole and all of that. But the, my two questions are, the speed limit coming down the hill on, on the highway there is forty-five miles an hour, and it, all of us have, have driven that hill, and if you're not, if you don't have your foot on the brake, you're accelerating as you come down the hill, whether you're at forty-five or not. My question is, Owen, is there possibly a way we could contact M dot to find out if we could get that speed reduced maybe to thirty-five? And I know that's not something the city can handle, but maybe we can just ask the question to kind of read, for safety purposes. But the other question that I had is, could we put signage in the cemetery to not allow that to be an exit onto the highway? That very low visibility exit? I'm, I'm looking at you, Brian, because you know what I'm talking about.
The north entrance.
Yeah, which exit right at the end of Marble Street. It's a, you can't see when you're coming out of there very well, and you, you have to have your vehicle almost partly into the roadway before you can see, and I just wonder with some signage.
Or a right only, maybe?
Right, and that's what the guy was doing, but he.
Maybe it's a one-way, maybe it's only an entrance.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say. Only make it, allow for an entrance, but put signage in there to say, not an exit. Or, just because it's not a good.
Put up all your signage you want, people won't do it.
Well, I, I know. I, I know that as well, but it, it might avert some people.
You're better off putting up a sign that says, more align the lines of, exit carefully, something like that, because the idea of no, you can't go out, people have been going out that way for a hundred years.
I know.
Maybe something like, exit carefully so you don't end up a permanent resident too soon.
Right.
Yeah, right, so you might live here. Yeah, right, right.
Our, our city engineer, Ruthine, is here tonight.
Oh.
And so she heard what you had suggested regarding the speed limit. We can get in contact with that.
Okay, that'd be great, that'd be great. I mean, there are just two things that maybe would lim, would improve the safety of that particular spot. It was kind of scary for that young girl who hit the car and, you know, he was there. Anyway, all right, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
All quiet here.
Anything? Marcus, you got anything?
I, I just wanted to mention, and I know Mike stepped out, there was a question and frankly, a concern about our protocols going into closed session.
We could wait for Mike to get back, because I have a good of the order thing.
Oh.
So you want me to go with that?
Sure, that's fine.
So I just want, for good of the order, I would like to talk about a really wonderful event that happened last Thursday. It was the Celebrate Women fundraiser for Cadillac Oasis Family Resource Center. And for those of you who don't know, Cadillac Fam, Cadillac Oasis is, runs a women's crisis center, domestic, deals with domestic violence, sexual assault victims, and helps people transition back into life after being victimized by domestic violence. Wonderful organization, and this, I've been to many of those, and this year, it was sold out weeks ahead of time. It was a joyous occasion. We had a speaker who works with the Attorney General's office and is working with Oasis and with our prosecutor's office here in Wexford County to bring back people who have fled, who had judgments on, for domestic violence or sexual assault. And it's a program that the Attorney General has put in place, and we have this amazing woman who is in charge of that. It was just such a wonderful, seeing so many members of the community, and it wasn't just women there, and honoring women who make a difference in the community, including those who work at, at the shelter, who work as advocates for Oasis and who work to keep things moving down there. So it was just such a wonderful celebration, and for a community our size to be able to support so many nonprofit organizations that help our neighbors here in this community. We live in a really good place with people who care about one another, so I just wanted to be sure to say that. All right, you two, you ready to tell us how you're going to do this closed session? Marcus and.
Yes, I'm sorry, we were talking, we were talking about the closed session.
Yes.
So just to walk you, you, you through, the, the public agenda does list, you know, the, the statute, the M C Ls, and then explains what it is. So like M C L fifteen point two sixty-eight subsection one, subsection H, is to consider confidential written legal opinions, which, as the statute goes on to say, are exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. If, if you're providing the topic in that motion, you're then waiving that right to the confidentiality of it, which is why the topics are not.
The topic itself is confidential.
Yes, the topic itself is confidential. And then the secondary M C L, which is M C L fifteen point two sixty-eight subsection one A, is to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager at his request, which is also, that's the statute itself that allows for that right, so, to be done in a closed session.
A closed session, okay. Would anyone care to make a motion to go into clo, and we will have to, after the closed session, we have to come back, go back into open session.
Yes, to close out the meeting.
To close out the meeting.
I'd make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to M C L fifteen dot two sixty-eight, one parentheses, H parentheses, to consider confidential written legal opinions which are exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute in pursuant to M C L fifteen dot two sixty-eight, parentheses, one, parentheses, A, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager at his request, invite Jerry Adams, community development consultant, and Jeff Dietl, director of utilities accordingly.
House Member French?
Yes.
Allen Boss?
Allen Boss?
Oh, wake me up, yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. It's been a little while.
It's not good.
It's not good.
Support. Councilmember Alamos.
What? Yes.
Go back into open session. Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls. French.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thanks everybody.
Oh, I thought you were reporting out.